I said to somebody asked me where I was, it just remind me of my days of teaching, classroom teaching when someone was late, they said, well, we had to wait for the train.
So many vehicles, $600 worth there this morning.
Has not responded to this meeting that's next week. Weren't we there last night?
For you what? Oh, I haven't been bringing coffee lately. I guess I must be weaning off it. I don't know. I, well, it came to me. I didn't know anything about, I opened it up, there's nothing in there that I even recognized. So I thought, well, I better hand it to Techie or some, somebody at least. There you go. That, some of that stuff, I wouldn't even know which end to plug into.
So are you going to be put the ham radio, so there is a group in town?
Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. And Commissioner Van Duzen, would you lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, call for public comment. I guess before that, I should mention if you have a cellphone, if you would please silence, if you need to take a call, if you could step out. And we are also streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still accept calls from the public that are about issues that are not on the agenda and for information only. The two phone numbers are 882-6248 or 882-6297, and those will be addressed during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners on the agenda?
No.
All right. Action then, number four, to approve the November 2nd, 2021 agenda. Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right, action to approve our October 26, 2021 minutes. Cottington County Board of Commissioners, motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any corrections or additions to that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right, we will move on then to monthly reports, and the first one is extension.
Morning, Joey.
Morning, Joey.
All right, well, thank you to those who attended our for each commission event. It was great to have it. Great to have it in person without having tickets like last year. So we still spaced out the tables and still did some of that stuff to help out families. I just returned from SDC Extension Conference last week. For each will be sharing their 2022 to 2025 strategic plan that we went through last year. With, we did lots of Zooms last year and did some in-person things last year for strategic planning. So they'll be doing that through town halls throughout the state. I know, I think closest one to us will be in Clear Lake on December 8th, I believe it is. So they'll be sharing what will be our plan is for 2022, 2022, 2025 strategic plans. So CloverBuds begins again in our 2021, 2022 for each year, and today's my first day. I'll be in Florence this week. I'm going to go Florence on the first Tuesday and Thursday, and then the next week I'll go to Waverly South Shore and Watertown. So far, we have 37 youth enrolled in our CloverBuds, and that's just starting right now. So just trying to get some numbers, so I know how much supplies I need and everything. So those kids are ages five through seven, so. And then I'll be attending the National Forage Conference, however, virtually this year. And that is November 15th through the 18th, so I'll not be going to Memphis this year. Next year, it's going to be in Wisconsin, so we hope to get a bigger delegation of South Dakota Forage Advisors to Wisconsin next year.
You are gonna go.
Was that next year?
No, this year.
No, I'll be virtually this year.
Okay.
I'm still going to be attending the workshops and stuff. And it's nice because they'll have ones, I couldn't attend, like some of the workshops, that you can go watch them later, you know, so you can, you know, catch up on them. Because sometimes they have about five of them you want to go to all at the same time, and you can only go to one of them. So this way I can watch them again, catch the other ones now virtually.
Yeah, that's nice.
I mean, that's the benefit of having it that way, too. Last night I had a shooting sports Zoom with my volunteers, and so we're starting to get that rolling, too. So we'll start that in January.
You have plenty of volunteers, plenty of help.
I have four volunteers. This is for BB gun, air pistol, air rifle.
Yeah.
We have a new, one of the dads is gonna get trained and help this year, too. So, yeah. So we're applying for another grant, so let's do November 5th. So that's why we had to meet and get some information and get it started, so. All right.
Great. I didn't know if, if it's a boy or a girl.
No, I have to meet with them yet, too, so they kind of work separately, I mean, but together, but just different.
I didn't know Skip was gonna do it this year or not.
She has been doing it through the parking rack, so, yeah. She probably will.
Good, I hope so.
She loves that, so.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Stody.
Yep.
All right, let us move on with Todd, Veteran Service Officer Report. Good morning, Todd.
Good morning. Not a lot to report this month, but two DAV transports in October. We currently have three scheduled for November. I did check and talk to the South Quarter Department of Headquarters, or DAV Headquarters yesterday. They have no new information, other than it's still waiting on the computer chip, so. That's where we're at with that. We currently have eight qualified drivers. We're down a couple due to personal reasons from that standpoint. A big thing on the plate is the 2021 Veterans Day Ceremony. It's going to be at 10 o'clock at the Watertown Civic Arena, attached to the Watertown High School. Master ceremony will be the Commander Ernie Gatchell of VFW Post 750. Speaker will be retired Colonel Mark Cartney. Mike?
Mike Cartney.
Oh, sorry. Mike Cartney. We're going to present the trophy for the Veteran of the Year to Jerry Denman. Mike Cartney will be doing that. Watertown Community Band will be performing. Floor seating will be open for public and veterans. There will be some reserved parking in the front of the high school, in the front parking lot there. There will be a meal afterwards at VFW Post 750, starting at 12 o'clock. Ceremony will be streamed on KWAT.
What day was that again?
That is November 11th, Thursday, at 10 o'clock at the Watertown Civic Arena. It's a change. It's not going to be at the Extension Building. It's at the Watertown Civic Arena.
And that's for the purpose that the youth are able to attend that as well.
Yep, and the kids will be in the bleachers, so. Marine Corps Leagues Toys for Tots has officially kicked off, and the boxes are out in the community. Future events, we have a, I will be attending a free Veterans Appreciation Lunch for all staff and students at Lake Area Technical College on 9 November, from 11 to 1 o'clock at the lunchroom there. That's sponsored by American Legion Post 17. Tentatively planning to attend a mini-training conference in Sioux Falls. They don't know for sure if it's going to be December or January, so once that gets more details, I'll probably do a request to travel down there. Other than that, business is booming, so. If there's any questions, that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thanks, Todd. All right, let's, let's move on to the sheriff with Brad.
Morning.
Morning, Brad.
Well, it started with a monthly balance sheet here. For the month of September, our bank balance was $5,575.38. Drop down, you'll see we had $24 collected in copy fees, $4,080 in sheriff's fees collected, $456.88 in executions collected, and $425 in warrant fees collected, for a grand total of $4,985.88. Bring us back to our balance of 589.50. Lee's got it pulled up on the big screen there, kind of go over some of the activity of the Sheriff's Office and jail here. Sheriff's Office, deputies responding to 649 cases and calls for service in the month of September. Eight accident reports were completed. Eighty-four warrants were served. 151 civil papers were served. And 6,299 transport miles, so you can see the transports are up a little bit. Still from the end of the, end of August, beginning of September there.
You have a long, long one in there.
We, end of August, beginning of September, we had one to Louisiana, one to Washington.
Wow.
So we had some, had some running, going there.
We've still done the math on that, Brad, as far as flying. It's more.
We've actually got some guys that have been trained on that, you know, with the TSA. Math is real, real similar, especially right now, the prices of flights are really high. Some of the logistics and concerns you have is if you have an inmate that's maybe violent or not the most pleasant to be with right now. You get them with a bunch of people on an airplane, and all you gotta say is one or two bad things, and they're kicking you and that inmate off the airplane. So we have looked into that, and we do have people trained that are eligible to fly if the right prospect comes along, I should say.
This is, that is completely a different situation. You know, and has a lot more regulations involved.
There's a lot more regulations and a lot more, just the logistics. So you get to the location you're going, and then you have to get the inmate to and from, and they drop you off, and then you're left without a vehicle, like say if you have a violent or an inmate that causes any issues, you're kind of stuck, so. There are some logistical things that are, are in play with that, so.
And just so the public knows, we're not transporting misdemeanor warrants. These are usually felony, more violent warrants that are, be an extra.
This, this goes, this is a request of the State's Attorney.
Yes, this is at Sheriff's Department. This is not something that I get to just pick and choose who we come and go and get. There's checks and balances in place here. The State's Attorney is one that actually ultimately puts in an NCIC request, which means that we will, will get that person, so.
Yep. We put them on the bus, I mean, on the prison transport bus.
Yep, we utilize the prison transport bus quite a bit. What Charlie's referring to here is there's a bus system that travels back and forth across the state from Rapid City. It has a few stops, you know, Pierre, Chamberlain, there's many stops kind of along the way, and end up in Sioux Falls. Place we can handle back and forth, but we do utilize that Penn Bus quite a bit for getting somebody from west to back and forth, or for getting somebody from the penitentiary down in Springfield. If we can get it, get them to Sioux Falls, that'll save a little bit of time, too, so. We do use the Penn Bus as much as we can.
That, that's what it's called, the Penn Bus, huh?
Ah, that's what we call it, the, the Penn Bus.
That's still great. On the side, it's got Penn Bus.
Pennington County, actually, they're the ones that run the bus. Actually, we actually pay Pennington County.
Jail on wheels, is what it is.
It's a big jail on wheels.
Are we, are we, just curiosity, are we eligible to use the same transport system like ATF uses?
The.
Marshal.
The Marshal Service is kind of what you're thinking of. The Marshals, back in the day, I'm going to say 10 plus years ago, they used to do a lot of transports. That was, that's kind of their goal, their, their, part of their responsibility is to do transports for law enforcement. They've gotten out of that over the last 10 years. We used to be able to call them, pay them a small fee, and they would get them from point A to point B for us. They have gotten out of that business. Too busy or whatnot, but I, I have reached out to them, and they, they don't do that anymore.
Nothing is never and nothing is forever.
Exactly. If you jump on down to the middle here, you'll see some of our jail activity. For the month of September, our daily, our average daily population was 57.73. Just, I would like to give you guys a heads up, we're at 75 this morning, so you can see how we do fluctuate kind of up and down a little bit. Our high average daily population was 61, and that was on the 3rd of September. Our low ADP was 52, and that was on the 22nd of September. On the 24/7 program on the Scram Bracelet, we had 17 people on the Scram Bracelet. Twice daily PVTs using our little computer machine out there, we had 54 people using that. Twice weekly, you ate, we had 73 people on that, so you can see that drugs are kicking, alcohol a little bit here, or no, we are showing there. Sweat Patch, we had two people on there. One thing, we gotta make a little change to our report, and we're using that remote breath a little bit more. That's the, that's with a little cellphone, takes a picture and shows you GPS and takes a picture of you while you're PVTing. We've been utilizing that a little bit more, so we've got three people on there. The recorder does not show that.
Separate from the twice daily.
It, it's a part of that program, but it's a separate machine, separate than the Scram Bracelet.
Separate, that's not included in the data.
Yep, it's not included in the data here, so that'd be three more, and I would actually print our number up. 149, where you can see up on top there. Yep, she was going to reach out to you and see, she was trying to figure it out, the math there a little bit, so.
When they do a picture, do they all, is that also GPS coordinate to where they are at present time?
I think there's a setting in there that you can check the GPS coordinates. Not 100% sure. It does facial recognition. It does facial recognition, takes a little video of them when they're PVTing, so. Yep. If you jump on down a little bit more, you'll see more jail numbers there. Let's scroll down a little bit on there, Lee. Oh, sorry, a little bit more. One more, one more click if you can. There you go. It's just a way. All, okay, now, that worked. You'll see in the month of September, an Alton County contract, we collected $3,756.52. Work release fees, we collected $800. 24/7 fees, we collected $9,303. And scram fees, we collected $2,762. Month of September.
Hey, I, I noticed on the news, there's been quite a bit of news there, talking about the length of stay in the jail. And I can see, it's kind of a, it's a problem, isn't it? And man, we had some people in here for years, you know, the one, over $100,000 is county has spent on, you know, one inmate, you know. But it's tough to get them through. I mean, if the judges kind of hold a lot of this up, right?
It's not the judges.
Different parts of the process.
They're different part, yeah. Judges are just part of the process, yeah.
It's part of the law process, the process of law.
But, but who do we need to, what, is there a thing that we could do to try to get people to realize, you know, that these delays cost the county, the taxpayers a lot of money? And kind of move things along a little bit sooner or quicker or whatever?
Like I say, I, I've met with the judges, and I'll be. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces in play that we as lawyers, or not lawyers, I should say, laypeople understand, but, you know, a lot of it has to do with making sure that the inmate exhausts, you know, that the defendant exhausts all the opportunities that, that they might have for the, for the best outcome.
Legal process.
That's part of the process, and that takes time. Ironically, though, it ends up making people sit in jail longer as a result, so. That's kind of what's going on, but there, there may be other things that we could, and we've been talking with the judges.
I think after this amount of time, because we've had this discussion since I got on the county commission five, six years ago, that the judges are well aware of the problem, and I think that the attorneys are, too, but it's just part of the process, unfortunately, and COVID kind of shut things down for a while. I think things were finally starting to fire back up again. So hopefully, we see things speed up a little bit, but Myron, I understand what you're saying. We do have people in jail for long periods of time, but it's part of the process, too.
Yeah, we could go back and, ever since, that would be interesting, given the lower ADP, that would be kind of interesting.
What, when is it, does it have anything to do with the length of time where the prime committed as far as whether they stay here in the county or go to a state pen in Sioux Falls? What makes that decision?
The judge actually makes that decision when they're sentenced. So pre-sentenced, they're gonna either be here or they're gonna be out on bond. So once they get sentenced, the judge will have a sentence hearing, and the judge will determine whether or not they want to send a person to the penitentiary or if they have imposed a local jail time here.
Is it generally a year or longer?
Generally, it's, absolutely, what Troy is saying here. Historically, it's been around a year or less is kind of the longest we would typically see somebody in our facility. Let's say it was, obviously, it changes a little bit over the last few years. Typically, the only time you're getting over here is, from my observation, is so. If you have, you know, a pre-sentence, you know, that pre-sentence phase takes over you, and occasionally it does, and that's kind of, and that's probably, those, those inmates really send up the average length of stay, that, you know, that data point. So, and some, sometimes it's a mental health issue, but a lot of times it's a process, so.
Well, we, we just had one case, and you mentioned this ongoing process of law. It was extended by six months.
Well, there's motions and everything else. I mean, it could be, you know, maybe they need a witness here or, or something that, you know.
As I said, there's a lot of, a lot of fingers in play when they're talking about court cases, trials.
My question, the reason I asked the question, I was wondering if there's pushback from the state penitentiary that they're full of, and they, they don't want them. They're telling, just keep them there, you know?
Well, that, that might be, that'd be at the judges' level, though.
I have asked the question, Mr. Judges.
All right.
All right, just a couple of things on my end here. End of September, Sheriff's Office, we hosted a crisis intervention training locally here, Police Department, HSA was heavily involved. Assisted us with the training on, on that. It was a week-long, 40-hour training. Another kind of issue that we're looking forward, we're not looking forward, trying to get through here, is everybody's having a supply and demand issue. Remember back in March, April, February, somewhere in there, we accepted our bids for our lock upgrade and our cameras upgrade in the detention center in jail. We still have not received our, they still haven't got the locks and the cameras, so. I just know we're looking at, close to coming to the end of the budget year. I don't know how that works or affects or what we do there. Been working with the camera and lock company to try and get this going, but they can't do much without their product either, so. We haven't paid a bill or, we haven't paid a, no payment or bill or anything, but like you say, this phase affects next year's phase of getting the rest of the lock stuff in the jail.
Everything is so electronic nowadays, it all comes down to there's no chips. Yep, that's where it is.
Cindy, how does that work as far as carryover of those funds for? Just supplement.
I mean, you know that it was budgeted for 2021.
It's already been approved.
Didn't get here, yeah. You just supplement the budget when you need to next year.
Right, yeah, because his funds have to, yeah, go back, but now that we know, I mean, it was in this year's budget. You did everything you needed to do. It's because of supply and demand of why we're not getting this done. It's not anything to your detriment.
2022.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping, like you say, middle September, middle October, middle November. Hold my breath, so. I hope it, hope it happens soon.
How did you handle Halloween?
We had, we had deputies out and about in the small towns, handing out candy and glow sticks and whatnot. Try to do that every year. Seems like it was well-received this year. A lot of, a lot of trips here. No problems, no issues. Went, went good for us, so.
Perfect. Thank you, awesome.
Very good.
Just a quick update on COVID in the jail there. Just, we had, we'll keep continually working with PLH. They come in, and many inmates that want to get vaccinated, they have the option to do so. Just the other day, they gave out 18 COVID shots to inmates that wanted to get that. It's not a mandatory thing, it's their choice. There's these three more, it sounds like, signed up for this Wednesday, so it'll be 21 here last week that have gotten a COVID shot. We do have two inmates that have COVID in the facility right now, maybe work release inmates. We're able to quarantine them in a separate area, in the handicap area, so those are something that we would monitor. It's nice having the nurses station built in. She's been CLIA certified, so she actually has quick tests that are given to us by the state because we've been CLIA certified in the nurses station there. So she's been able to test and monitor, keep track of the health of our, our inmates.
Can I just, just for a point of clarification, so it's not spreading in the jail. These are people that got arrested and they had COVID when they came in.
Work release.
Like say to build on the work release a little bit. Since we opened up work release four, five, six months ago, or something like that, the numbers have been really low. One, two, three, just a few days ago, we were up to 10, 10 people, so that number has climbed a little bit. So I think that's, that's.
That's gonna, you know, it's.
It's, it's not spreading in the jail, but we do have a couple that we're watching.
So Brad, with those vaccinations, were they given the one-dose one? Because like, will they still be in when they would need their second shot, or how will that work?
The 18, that would have been the one-dose shot. The other three coming up here, that is going to be the twice shot, though. I think that was the Moderna, the second shot.
So they'll be there long enough to get the second.
That's all I have. Thank you.
If you have any other questions.
Keep the snow away. Keep the snow away. I, we're trying, we're trying. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
All right, thanks, Brad. All right, let's move on to item number seven, action to approve the 2022 wage increase for non-union employees. Yeah.
Yeah, you're up, I think. 2022.
Non-union employee wage increase. Just in time.
I was going to tell you we're.
We can probably, maybe we can say, are you ready?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we can maybe take more.
I think this should be short.
Okay.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is the good one. Okay, all right. Um, so yeah, we need to look at what we're doing for COLA for the non-union employees. We had negotiated the union contracts and did the 1.75% COLA. We had negotiated the union contracts and did the one point seven five percent COLA for those. And so I guess I would recommend that you do the same for the non-union employees and that we can. Get that approved and then the wage scale basically, um, I will adjust that to the wage bill that was put in place. We'll shift that up um, by the percentage that you decide on and have that ready to go January first.
Nick, motion to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Thanks, Natalie. All right, item number eight, action to register for a proposed opioid settlement and sign onto the settlement. And Cindy, you want to?
Actually, you have just as much information as I do, so.
This, um, the state's attorney talked to me a little bit about that. I thought she was gonna be here, but she's the one who put it on the agenda, I'm guessing. Um, so essentially it's a class action. The attorney general's encouraging counties to sign on to. So the, and then if you if we do get money as a result of it, then there's some, some areas, basically opioid mitigation, things related. For abuse mitigation, things like that, um, they're listed in there. Um, it could also be. Kind of fits well with some of the stuff we've been talking about with the welfare office, the warm handoff programs and recovery services, so. Services and those kinds of things, so. I guess I would, I would make a motion that we. Sign on to this.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Second by Johnson, and there are, you know, it's statewide, so there's other counties that are already agreed to do this and that's in the process, so it'll be interesting how many.
Commissioner Hampton is the fact that somewhere in here it said, depending the settlement, if there is one. Will the size of it will be determined by the number of participants in.
Yeah. Right. Yep, you would have to agree to this to be part of that, so if they, the counties that don't sign on, obviously won't be eligible, so.
Yeah, so if I can just, people might wonder like how much of opioid had an effect in our community and and there have been some situations. That would have been a good thing to ask the sheriff, he was still here, but there have been some situations where this has been a problem in our community, some. Some fairly prominent situations too, and I, so meth is also a problem, but this is a problem too.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, that motion carries. All right, item number nine, we will get Mark Box with is the executive director of Watertown Development Company. Um, annual update.
Thank you for the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you. As I was walking over last week, I reminded myself of in previous stops, I used to do quarterly visits. Quarterly updates to city council and county commissions and they always went well and I thought we should think about doing that here. And as I stepped out of the meeting last week, Commissioner Van Duzen stopped me and said, hey. And reminded me, if you ever want to visit, have anything to talk about, you're certainly welcome. And I ran into Commissioner Hampton the next day at the event at Harmony Hill with um, what the sisters are doing. And she shared the same thing and I said, you know, we used to do the quarterly updates, what do you think? So here we are, we'll start with quarterly updates.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So I'll reach out to Cindy at the end of each quarter and we'll find a timely. Time to come in and share what's going on. This one will do a quick overview of our annual activity. We wrapped up our annual meeting, which was last week. And I will, it was my intention to bring in a report, copy of our annual reports with me today, but I had another meeting. That ran long and straight to here, so when I get back, I'll email that to you. Project activity in our annual report, we highlight. Uh, the expansion at Dakota Tube that created forty-five new jobs and doubled their square footage. So they, we've done three expansions with them in the last four or five years and they continue to grow. And that's, that's phenomenal. We really believe in. The growth and expansion of our existing companies, they're the fabric of our community. They populate and attend our churches, our service clubs and and the rest of our volunteer community activity. They're spending their money here. If we don't take care of our own businesses, somebody else will do that for us. Our home program is a housing incentive program where we'll provide funds for affordable housing. This is aimed at people out of state trying to attract new people to Watertown. Workforce is our biggest problem and within workforce, housing is the biggest challenge in that. And we're competing for the same talent that every community across the country is, so this is a great program. Uh, that we will continue to increase and expand the use of. Um, we're doing some regional activity. First district has received a grant. Of as a result of the COVID activity. And we're trying to develop, we are developing a resiliency plan. So we're partnering with them and they've given us a sub grant to do some community outreach throughout the county. And a little bit beyond as far as the impact and trying to be prepared for the next emergency. Situation doesn't necessarily have to be a pandemic. Hopefully it's not a pandemic, but there are other things like natural disasters. Um, that we're not. That that we can be prone to, so downtown development. You've all seen the activity downtown with what Eric Scott and Jesse Craig have done and what they continue to do. Their investment in the downtown is phenomenal. The key to any successful vibrant community. Is a thriving core and a thriving mixed-use downtown. We've got so many wonderful boutique shops, the Goss, of course. The fact that we have a downtown grocery store is something a lot of communities don't look and we take that for granted. I'll stop that phone call. But that that's helped driving our our vibrant downtown and I would tell you that. Over the last three years, there had been at least fifty million dollars in new development that we're aware of in downtown. And and wouldn't surprise me if that's closer to sixty or seventy. We've taken over the urban renewal fund and the administration of that. And we've approved a total of just under sixty thousand dollars in in three projects. This would be for facade renovation, storefront renovation, uh, continuing to encourage businesses. To reinvest into their buildings. Uh, a couple of programs, uh, highlighting Merry and Bright Christmas and the Carnival on Camp. If you remember back when we were kids, the the old crazy days and the excitement. And things that crazy days brought to downtown and what it meant to the community. The Carnival on Camp that we did this year was a first time event. Is our effort that we're going to build back a traditional crazy days. Type of event that we all knew and loved when we were um, younger, if I may. Uh, community development, you're all very aware of the ice arena. We have been engaged in that, that's off and running. Uh, we're working with three different entities right now on potential build out, other development around. The um, ice arena area, those being mixed-use development. Uh, bar, restaurant, hotel and apartment complex, so some exciting things happening there. As well as the uh, Foundation Plaza and while I'm thinking of the Foundation Plaza. Work will begin on the ruins property and the demolition of the old senior citizen center. Um, virtually any day now.
The ruins property, just for clarification, Mark, is the old palace apartment building location, for people that don't know.
Thank you.
Mark, is the, are the seniors moved over to the new location yet?
Yes, they are.
I wasn't sure if that had happened.
Yep, that was several things needed to line up. You bet. And as the sheriff talked about supply chain issues. Well, that was impacting the build out of generations and so the, it's been delayed, but most of it beyond. Any of our control, but it's moving forward. Workforce initiatives again uh, are are attract and enhance. We partner with local businesses to offer incentives to bring people, new people to the community. Uh, the governor's office of economic development recently started a a statewide program that we will partner with them on. And that will fortify our uh, attract and enhance program and and we'll have a third partner in that. So that will leverage our dollars and and make it uh, more attractive in in bringing. Uh, new companies or excuse me, new people to uh, to the community. I'll close with something that isn't in the annual report and that is, over the past year, we worked on sixty-six projects. We answered thirty-four requests for information and we closed, excuse me, seven projects. What really excites me about those numbers is that's on par with our average numbers. Looking pre-COVID. So the fact that we maintain that level of activity during a COVID year speaks really well for our community. And what we've done and and what we are doing, the vision of not only county commission, but the city and and our city leaders. So we're really excited about that. We've got a lot of momentum and we'll continue to build. Be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I've sat on the board at the Watertown Development Company as a representative of this body. And um, I am very um, impressed with the level of and dedication of that board. Every one of those members that sit on that board have a vested interest in the, in seeing the development and growth. Not only in the city of Watertown, but our area and our region as well. So Mark, thanks to you and your staff, uh, everybody up there is doing a great job and I'm happy to sit on the board.
Thank you. Yeah, our our board is phenomenal. Our, the team, Tracy, Michelle and Amanda are are amazing. They're really um, the force that keeps, keeps the train rolling, so I'm very blessed to have a great board and a great team.
Yeah, I don't really have a question either. I just have a comment basically, or I'm hoping to. I sit on the NACO, so that's a national board, it's a community workforce and economic. There's a survey out now, so I guess I would like to meet with you to see what, what of those policies would best serve our community. And then I'll weigh in on that survey for what's best for our community, so try to get together with you.
Absolutely.
And then I'll fill that survey out, so.
Sounds good. Thank you for your continued support. Thank you very much for your investment in us. We greatly appreciate it. And we'll continue to do great things.
Very good. Appreciate you doing that. I'll look forward to the quarterly report.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number ten, action to approve FY twenty twenty-three weed grant application. And Steve, I'm guessing that's your. Field.
Steve.
Good morning.
Morning, Steve.
This is a grant that we apply for every year through the South Dakota um. Uh, Department of Ag and what this is, is funding that comes from um, all the registration for all the chemicals. And the amount is two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that will be divided amongst um, counties that meet the criteria. Um, generally, there's always a few that doesn't meet it. Last year, they had passed because of COVID. They distributed it evenly, even though um, there was. Criteria that didn't have to be met, but this year, this funding probably will, or for two thousand twenty-three, the funding will probably be a little higher than. What it was this present year. Um, this year it was at four thousand, so.
I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Thanks, Steve. All right, item number eleven, discussion possible action to purchase a nine fifty wheel loader.
Good morning. If you guys all have the. Documents for the. The order that we're looking at. A loader that we're having repaired. We're waiting for bearings. So. That's on hold. I did a little checking on uh. Rental rates. Butler machinery. There are seventy-five hundred dollars a month. Hundred and sixty hours a month, forty-seven dollars an hour. RDO is eight thousand dollars a month, hundred and sixty hours, fifty dollars an hour. With the purchase of this loader, Butler said they would rent or not rent us, they would let us use the loader until the new one came.
Because there's no guarantees on those bearings will be in.
No. Charter said it last week about the supply, demand.
Yep, and I did talk to Matt down there and he told me that. He's estimating that to get these bearings will be about the middle of next week and it'll take one more week to put the thing together.
That's on a. That's being optimistic, right?
That is not set in stone.
Yeah.
That is his best guess.
That's what everybody has now is their best guess.
It's it's not, it's not a totally weird bearing, it's uh, something that's normally in the supply chain, it just ain't there right now. So like he says, within the next two or three weeks, we'll.
Yep, it should be back again. And uh, Butler Machine, we could go pick up a loader tomorrow. In Sioux Falls, correct, in Sioux Falls. This is, this is Chad Morgan. He's with Butler Machinery. So.
All right. So I guess um. I don't know what the rest of the commission thinks, if we are able to. Use a loader, I mean, this one can still get fixed, but. We could.
Right, whatever, whatever we put into it, we'll get out, plus the forty-six thousand fifty dollars, wasn't it?
What, what kind of burden would it be on the county, Rick? Uh, since it, it, you know, I know we're at, we're waiting for two bearings. Uh, let's say it takes a month. Um, let's just knock on wood and hope that it doesn't snow in two months, you know. You know, we have a, we have a, in the budget to purchase a a new loader in the next budget in twenty twenty-three. Um, just to sit back and wait, you know, and uh, get this one repaired and get it uh. Use it, use it until the end of the year. Uh, I mean, would, you you think that you could get by? Uh, you you do have a loader, you do have one.
A loader right now, we could use the other one right now too, so we're, we have to do one thing at a time. We can't do multiples, because right now we're hauling out of Watertown. And if I had, we'd be hauling out of two different places right now. But we can't, so we have to finish what we're doing to move over to do what we're, what the next project is, one at a time.
If the farmers out there had two combines, they could get done twice as fast too, but sometimes you just have to do with what we got.
And if this loader breaks down, we're sitting with one. No, no, excuse me, none.
Going into a snowy season potentially.
And this is, this is the loader that I'd like to purchase anyhow, so this is my recommendation, which would be.
So two questions, one is if we were to approve this, would it come out of this year's funds or would it be?
So it won't probably get here until the end of the year, so it'll come out of next year's budget anyhow, so.
And the other question was, can you um, tell us? Brings up the bids and I understand there's a.
This, this is through Sourcewell. It's already been bid.
At the state.
That's why he did it before.
You know, for some people, we know that typically you have to put up the bids if something.
Yep, this, this, this is, this is fine, I mean, this, this, not disagreeing with this. Uh, as far as. It coming from Sourcewell, but we have nine different front-end loaders that are. Sold in Sioux Falls. We have six different dealers down there, all reputable. I would like to see whether this comes from Sourcewell or whether this. I would like to see whether this comes from Sourcewell or whether this comes from the state bid, wherever, what if they're wanting the same. But I would like to see this put up to a bid, an open bid.
And see, this loader is basically replacing the same loader that we have.
Yeah, this is, this is a nine fifty M instead of a nine fifty eight.
Yes. And basically all I'm doing is just replacing the loader that we have as to go into something else.
This is, this is Caterpillar's price for replacing it. There are, there's a lot of reputable front end loaders out there.
Aren't those all listed on Sourcewell as well?
I would say most of them are. There may be some that are not because that's when you get a bid anymore, most of it's right off Sourcewell.
So I mean, we only see one coming back and that's Caterpillar, Caterpillar.
Well, the other ones have the average.
There, the other ones are on there. Why are we not seeing the the other thing?
Comparable bids.
A little bias.
This is the, for the type of equipment that's wanted or needed to replace, there maybe aren't those options with those other ones. And they have that opportunity to put that on there so that everyone can utilize that.
The opportunity to pick what we want.
Well, I guess the question comes out of specifications, so I mean, do any other, any other help in the answer to specifications?
That is a good question. Most of them are probably comparable. But this is what the spec that that we go off for this loader. That's how we bought the last one. That's what we're going off on this one, so.
The other thing to keep in mind is if we go with this one, we will have a, be able to utilize another loader like whenever until this comes in, which we don't know, you know, if
Yeah.
the other company was going to charge rent.
And here in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna have a dealer right here. A stone's throw from our shop.
I
Parts, all of it.
I I have no problem with this, but one of the things that you did say, you you said this loader is sitting in Fargo.
No.
You know, you said, you said we we can go get it today and
No, the lease machine.
The rental.
Could be used.
Well, the lease machine.
Yes. This, this one won't be in until around the end of December.
That's what I was wondering as far as, you know, the budget, you know, we could can we put this, if we bought the new one, could we pay for it in twenty three?
Yes.
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty two.
Well, I'm pushing it pretty hard here.
Getting budgeted for in twenty twenty.
Yeah, I was trying to squeeze twenty three.
Go back to his question and ask, can we pay for it in twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
That was the question.
We want to use it a year to find out if we really like it.
There you go.
Yeah.
How old is the other loader that we have?
It was bought in two thousand six, two thousand seven, so it's right fifteen years.
How many hours around?
Oh, right around six thousand, got me right.
Six thousand?
Right, so something like that. I can't remember right off the top of my head. Be five or six thousand, something like that.
Okay, so that is how many years old? Fifteen years old. And so we put on about, say, five thousand hours a year, six thousand hours a year, our total of the use. So you take fifteen and divide it by five, that's how many hours a year?
Three thousand.
That's three hundred and some hours a month.
We're also have two loaders that we also
Right, so we have about six hundred hours.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's, that's between two loaders. The other one gets about the same. That one might even have more hours on it, so.
So we got rid of one, this one that broke down had fifteen thousand hours on it and the other one has got six thousand hours on it, which is nine thousand hours less and we're scared about that one breaking down. I guess everything could break down.
But I I gotta get, I'm still not clear, so help me, Rick.
All right.
If we were to okay the purchase of this new loader today, you said something about Butler would let us use one for nothing.
That's correct.
Is that?
Yeah, we can have representative come up. You can come on up and sit down and then so just mention your name again, please, just for the record. Thank you.
I'm Chad Morgan with Butler Machinery.
Thank you, Chad.
Yes, so the machine that we are quoting you guys right now, this is a machine that will show up at the end of December. And so you have no problem with this being a twenty twenty two purchase because that's probably when you're gonna get it anyhow. It's after the first of the year. But if you commit to this purchase, then what we will do is we will lend you the machine, a machine that's the same model and everything, until the new one shows up. So you'll be getting to use a nine fifty M cat wheel loader for free for the month of November, December and into January when the new machine shows up. So we're talking eight, ten months of free usage.
That's the word that I really like to hear.
Would we be able to use that until we get that machine? So I mean, if it goes into February or March, we're
Yes.
still gonna have access to that.
Our snow blower is compatible with this then?
Yeah.
So what happens when this used one breaks down?
Then we'll get parts to fix it.
Their machine.
We do. Butler Machinery does. The only thing that you're gonna be liable for, guys, is you're allowed to have insurance on it, just like any machine. And then if they, if it's a damage to the machine because of operator error, just like all of your other the machines are, you'll have to pay for that fix also. But anything that, anything else that goes wrong with the machine that is the machine failure, that's Butler Machinery's problem. So the parts and service, everything will be taken care of by Butler Machinery.
What, how many hours would this have approximately?
Honestly, I don't know. We've got two machines on hold for you right now, so it'll be one or the other. I do believe it's a one or, one or two year old machine with four hours. I I couldn't honestly tell you.
Now, there's another option here, guys, to to look at. We're looking at a twenty twenty one machine, is that right?
No, you're looking at a twenty twenty two machine.
Twenty twenty two, sure.
Yep.
Uh, we had our fifteen thousand hours on the other one. What would be the difference between the price of the twenty twenty one and the twenty twenty two, let's say two or three hundred hours on it?
We don't have any like that. So what we do is the machines that we have that you're, that we're gonna lend you to use, they're in our rental fleet. And if a machine is in our rental fleet, it's not for sale. It'll stay in that rental fleet for three to five years before it's even available to purchase for anyone to purchase or us to sell to them. So we don't have a lot of machines otherwise. Yeah, no, good question. And then a lot of times too, Charlie, with the governmental discount that you get on these machines, a used machine is not much different surprise.
No, I understand.
Especially with the used market right now that's going on out there on all equipment, along with farm equipment, cars. I mean, you hear about used trade in values being so high. It's, we're the same thing in our industry.
So the the federal tax would not be taken off of, say, a twenty twenty machine where it would be taken off of this new one?
The governmental discount that's given exactly, you are correct. It's, yes, you are.
Would be taken off the new one, but not off the old.
Not off the old one, exactly.
It's just like vehicles, usually only get that when you buy a new vehicle, any kind of incentives that they use are only on new.
Yes.
And I was, and that's a little bit of an inaccuracy on that part, but it's, this is something that counties state, states.
Can I see any governmental agencies, yes, that get that in the state of South Dakota?
Townships, counties.
Anything that's government related gets a governmental discount, absolutely.
So I guess I'll make a motion.
Can I ask for clarification first? Are we moving forward with repairing the one that's down?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we responsible?
Last week, didn't we?
You did, you did, but after this discussion today, I just wanted to clarify that that has not changed.
Now, are we responsible for the
Let me clarify that a little better then, okay? So right now we're allowing you what, forty six thousand? Okay, so if you put ten thousand dollars into that machine, if if that's what it takes to fix it, now we are allowing you fifty thousand. So every dollar you put into it, you're gonna get back.
Okay.
If we, if, let's just, here's a difference now. So if we had a machine right now in our lot that you could buy and take right now, then our trade allowance would be forty six thousand. You wouldn't have to touch anything, but
So if our machine is fixed in a timely manner, we won't need the free rental?
Exactly.
Okay, that's okay.
You will get your machine back and then we get our rental machine back.
And we get all the money that we put into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're not gonna lose money.
No.
No, you're not losing anything.
Right.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the purchase.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments, questions yet?
Um, and you will get me the amount of paper I need for the Sourcewell bill, okay?
Goes back.
Okay, everything that I need for my file for when Department of Legislative Audit comes in. Okay, thank you.
It'll be all, it'll be all clear to your auditors.
Thank you.
We're very good at that now because we've been doing this for so many years.
Now, the Sourcewell is a new means that most of this sort of equipment is purchased.
That's all the state.
Purchase is for, through, is from Butler through the Sourcewell, yeah, correct.
And that's, and that's what, I just wanted to make that comment. I noticed that there was some discussion about having other bids on that, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna fall back on on the Sourcewell and the research that you've done, Rick, knowing how to use that site and it's a state contract site. And I just, you know, you've done your homework on it, otherwise you wouldn't be here asking. And I put faith and trust in you that you've researched this and it's the right choice for what you need, so. That's all I got.
Very good. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I know that, we know this, this loader here. I still think we owe it to the voters to put this up for a it, a bit cheap. I believe we're gonna have our loader back in about three weeks' time. That is not a guarantee, but that's the, what I was given. And for that amount of time, I think we could go without a current holder. We have one now. I see the city running different brands than we do. Yes, the city does not do what, exactly what we do. And therefore, I think we owe it to the, to the voters to put this up to a bid, even though Sourcewell is a bid.
Right, Commissioner Johnson, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, well, I think I agree with Troy and and also with with Commissioner Waterman and that, you know, it's nothing what we're doing here is Sourcewell, you know, that's, that's where, that's kind of a a foggy area to me right now. I mean, how, how hard are they working to get the best bid? You know, that's what I'm wondering. I'm, hopefully they're doing their job. Hopefully they're, they're getting input from all of the potential vendors out there. But that's something that none of us here can answer right now.
And that's up to the vendors. They all know it's there, so if they want to participate, that's their choice.
When was the last time you bid a The last time I bid anything was with Cottington County back in two thousand sixteen for two brand new water graders. Was everything else or fifteen or sixteen? I can't remember what year that was. That was the last time I've ever bid a water grader or any equipment.
And everything else is done Sourcewell.
Everything else. I, we do bid occasionally. I just had a bid a few weeks ago on a used piece of equipment. I I've done that, but that's because it's used. It does, there is no governmental discount through Sourcewell. There's nothing like that. So on the used equipment, we have to go through bids, but that, this, their usual rarity is this was a half million dollar trash compactor for landfill as opposed to a million dollar one that's brand new. And so that's why they have to be bid, but so I see the possible, see this, you know, the thing, so they have rentals, so to speak, is is good. It would be kind of nice to see the different prices available, so it's all, even though if you don't put up the bid, but just for people to see, okay, that's sell the machine so that we can see what's out there, just so we understand. You know, understand the research will learn, right? And then the other, the other thing is, you know, there is, there is a, an aspect that's where you're giving opportunities to potential vendors. So.
I know.
So anyway, I decided to register, so. But just the, so if you could lay that out for us, pay for future, future, so I'll support this because of, you know, the, the possible urgency here. We do need that, that loader. But and it does, it does seem like a really, a a very, very deal. But again, you know, if you could just lay it out for us in the future, that'd be very helpful. Thanks.
I had to follow up on what Leah's saying. You know, the people that we contact or contact us, you know, there's some that are bleeding green. Some are bleeding yellow and some are bleeding red. You understand what I'm saying? And they're thinking, well, if we are continually buying yellow, we just is there, is there something going on? You know, that's the question that we're gonna get, we get asked, you know, what, you guys getting a kickback? You know, let's call a spade a spade here, you know? And so we need to have our, our butts covered in, in plain language to make certain that when we use Sourcewell or whoever we use and 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 Harley has a very, very good point of view there that when it's out at bid, then all of our constituents see, you know, these are the bids that came in. We're here, we're just saying, well, Sourcewell, now, did they do their job? Did they do their, their duty? And hopefully they did. So that's, that's my point.
All right, any other comments, questions? Are we ready to vote?
Oh, I, I do have one more question and it's expound, expound on Commissioner Gable's statement. If we delay this for one week, I can't see where that's gonna create a problem. It would give our county road superintendent a week to bring those other figures, verifying these figures if they're verified. With other, with other people that are on Sourcewell.
Well, we've used this before on other pieces of equipment. This is the route that we went. So the other individuals or other companies should know that that's what we're using. So if they want to be included on that, they should also list it as well.
Are they on the list? That's my question. Are they on Sourcewell's list?
Yes.
Then why aren't we, why are we only seeing this one?
Because this is the one that met the specs and and is the lowest.
I don't, I don't personally know that this is the only one that met the specs. I want to see that.
Okay, when we did the motor gears, we looked at the R D, or we looked at the John Deere and RDO didn't have the right specs, what we went with. And you still argued about, so.
We, we also went with the company, we also went with the company that offered us no buyback whatsoever versus I won't mention the figure, which was rather large. As a guaranteed buyback.
Right, and we don't know even.
Is that, is it, is it too much to ask to put the work into looking at Sourcewell in an honest way and calling a spade a spade? Or is it something that we just don't want to do?
While we're delaying, we are work with the weather for another week, that we only have one loader that we could be using two, we could be getting more things done.
You know, I, I'm just gonna call this out, okay? Are you getting a kickback from Butler Cat?
Absolutely.
For purchasing anything through Butler Cat?
Absolutely not.
Have you done your homework on this? Is Sourcewell a reputable site? Does a state use Sourcewell for contract bids?
State uses it just about every county.
So if it's good enough for the state, why isn't it good enough for Cottington County?
And we don't know on, on this piece of equipment, if anybody else would, what kind of trade in? We don't know any of that information either. So I mean, we're getting a good trade in on this pieces of equipment.
Butler has our machine. They went through it. They know what they're getting, so. And RDO can't even look at our machines. It's in the Butler shop, so, you know.
Yeah. We ready to vote? All right, Cindy Calderon.
Gable.
Hi.
Waterman.
No.
Johnson.
Hi.
Van Duzen.
Hi.
Anton.
Hi.
Four in favor, one against.
Thank you.
Next time, Rick, just maybe bring a couple of options so we can look at them. Thank you.
All right, item number twelve, action to approve a change order on project B R O eight zero one five. All right, item number twelve, action to approve a change order on project B R O eight zero one five thirty-eight.
This is the bridge that was replaced on County Road Four last fall. And when they figured the tiling or piling, they had the wrong price per foot, if on your sheet, I think it was like eighty-five dollars per foot, which came up to one thousand twenty dollars. They had, when they figured it, they used the wrong figure, so I know it's been a year since this was done, but that, I just got the email last week. Because it was one thousand twenty dollars, I believe.
Okay.
Yet this change order is one thousand twenty dollars. This is change order number three on this project. Total change orders on the whole project come to five thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and seven cents. The contract amount was nine hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Any other questions, comments?
All.
Okay. All right.
This is, this is great, so this is just the, the like, the pilings were cases that made And they, they used the wrong amount. Yeah. When they figured it out, so. It took about eighty-five dollars.
That's number three, he said, Cindy.
Yes, third change order.
Okay.
All right, ready to vote? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. Item number thirteen, actions approved claims for payment.
I have nothing for thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen.
All right, number, or item number sixteen.
Or sixty, okay, sorry.
All right, public notices could be a quorum of commissioners next week, so we have a Commissioner Association meeting. We need to add in there still, well, that's in, in November now, Farm Business Banquet.
Wednesday, we this, this Wednesday, tomorrow, we have a Republican GOP committee meeting.
I don't have anything else. Does anyone else? All right, let's move on then to old business. Does anyone have any old business? How about new business? Is there any new? Anything for the open? I do have one item, just for your information. Cindy Danenbrink is retiring, and she's Executive Director, Chief Executive Officer, they call it now for ICAP. And we went through that process and have hired a new individual, and it's Eric Kunsweiler. He was the Planning Officer, so he's gonna move up into her position now, so he will be the new Executive Director for ICAP.
How do you spell that last name?
Eric's?
Common spelling.
Yeah, Eric or Cindy's?
How do you spell his last name?
Oh, no, I wondered if you wanted Eric's last name or Cindy's last name?
Eric.
Okay, Eric, it's K U N Z W E I L E R. New Chief Executive Officer.
Common spelling.
Yeah.
Now try to say it. All right, anything else for the open? I don't have a need for exec. Does anyone else? Natalie? Motion to adjourn, then.
So moved.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries.
Matthew Icettine.